...on the sergeant who's coming to the police department. Recently was brought to our attention that the thirteenth position in Clemington Police Department will be eliminated. Councilman Armbruster, first I would like to ask, uh, who proposed this and why would this be proposed?
Um, I have not, I don't know who proposed it. I was not on a, I just was sworn in at the last meeting, so I had no input into the current budget proposal. I was made aware after the budget was introduced that it did include eliminating the, it would be the 12th patrolman position, which also then 13th position of the full-time officers would be the chief, and then you also have the class two. Uh, but that would be eliminated from the budget, the, the position of the 12th patrol officer. Um, I feel very strongly on this issue, and I spoke to Councilman Weaver before the meeting about it, that, uh, it creates major issues with public safety, I feel, for the municipality in eliminating that position. The whole concept of the 12-hour shifts that we negotiated approximately, I believe, seven or eight years ago, when it was put into place, was based on 12 patrolmen working, uh, and that what that did is allowed the, uh, not allowed that you would always have a minimum of two men working the street, even if somebody was to call out, because you're always allowed to have one person call out. And under your current contract, that we cannot go below two men. If it goes below two men working, that's two full-time patrolmen. That doesn't believe under the contract included class twos or unofficial police officers, uh, without full duties. That requires immediate calling in of overtime to do that. I feel by eliminating that 12th position in the patrol, it would be a burden to the borough as far as the, uh, overtime budget, what that would do to it, along with, uh, creating more work for current employees who already have a fair amount of work, and would create fatigue issues.
I'm a little confused with the 12th position. That means that's occupied right now, so that person would be eliminated?
No, right now there is a, right now, the current structure of the police department allows for 12 patrol officers, one chief, and 12 patrol officers including sergeants and the lieutenant's position. But when I say 12 patrol officers, 12 patrol, the class two, which is due to current ride shift, is not counted in the 12 patrol officers that's set up.
I'd like to go over some issues where we stand right now, um, without that, with the look of that position still in, in effect, but where we are right now is a police department. We're not fine at all, by far. Uh, our, our police department is now reactive instead of proactive. It's not time to be proactive anymore, but therefore crimes do go up. In the month of January, February, March, we've had over sixty burglaries, okay? We don't have a detective bureau anymore. Uh, therefore, cases don't get solved as fast, and cases solve slower. So if we had a full-time detective, that detective would be assigned to that case, which would eliminate that case maybe the third, fourth burglary, but instead, since we don't have that position, it goes up to twenty, maybe thirty. And most of you live in town, that could be one of your houses. Secondly, um, crimes are definitely going up, and because of short manpower, we also wear many hats, okay? And when I say hats, I mean jobs. I alone am an internal affairs officer. I'm in charge of detective bureau slash investigation slash detective, uh, sergeant of patrol. I'm also the head evidence officer. Wherever evidence comes in, I have to log, take down to prosecutor's office, take down to the lab. I'm also in charge of backgrounds for firearms, perp intel license, um, new hires. Right now we have, uh, without patrolmen running, would leave this police department, we had two two-man shifts, two three-man shifts. We're at 12 officers right now. We need fifteen to be a very efficient police department. That'd give us a chief, a lieutenant, four sergeants, a patrolman, and one detective. Now, if one detective full-time, we can rotate one patrolman, make two detectives. And each patrolman will get experience being a detective, make them a stronger patrolman, which would result in cases being solved and crime down. Less officers going, creating more overtime, no matter way you look at it, either way. Um, at this time, I'd like to bring up Officer Schaefer. He has some numbers that he'd like to go over.
I only printed out six of the council members, and they're all just... If anybody does remember Warden Schaefer, we can on patrol officers here. I got to ask to, uh, bring forth some statistics, and I'll try to go through them, but that's why I gave you guys all for now, so you can all remember later. Pretty much the towns which surround us, Laurel Springs, Strapper, Silverdale, Pine Hill, although one are smaller than us. If you look, I, I broke it all down, uh, use Wikipedia for population, census, and so they had it. Laurel Springs, half, half a square mile, nine to hundred people, seven full-time officers. They handle 230 calls a month. They've only signed seven complaints in this year of 2012. Strapper, 1.6 square miles, 7200 people, 14 officers, two which are detectives, but they also have two part-time, one, one works full-time. They averagely handle, uh, 550 calls a month. Summerville, 1.4 square miles. They have approximately the same population as us, 5200. They have 13, 13 full-time officers, which includes one sergeant detective. They average 512 calls. Pine Hill is four square miles, double the size of Clemington, double the population of 10,000, per 2010 census. They have nineteen full, full-time officers, including two detectives, and one is a sergeant detective, who's also administration. They average 980 calls a month. Currently, as of Sunday, there are ninety-nine complaints for this year. Clemington, we're two square miles, 5,000 population, per 2010. We have 12 full-time officers, no detective, one time, full, part-time officer who works full-time, and we average 750 calls per month. We're at 98 complaints as of Sunday. Uh, as I put on there, unlike other towns, Clemington also handles increased calls during the summer months due to the Clemington Lake Park, which increases this town's population between 7,000 and 10,000 people on the weekends. That is not included in the monthly calls for service. If you look at the last page you put together, the calls for service just for the month, the month of March 2012, which I can tell you, January, February, March are quieter months, not as busy in. In March, you see Lindemall handle 1400, uh, approximately 14, 1500 calls. They're always usually in the top, in the hard zone. Pine Hill handle 987 calls, Clemington number three is 716 calls. Strapper's 550, Summerville 512, and so forth, and as you can see, they're going down. The average complaints per officer, due to the staffing levels in these towns, that I was able to get with Laurel Springs, Pine Hill ourselves, in the last ninety days, Laurel Springs has typed 1.2 complaints per officer. Pine Hill has typed 5.5 complaints per officer. Here in Clemington, we type 8.9. So that goes along with the Sergeant Warburts, 61, and about crime rates up, and we're typing away. Average calls per officer per month. Laurel Springs, 38, Strapper, 42, Summerville, 42, Pine Hill, 54. In Clemington, we handle an average 68 calls per officer per month. Again, that doesn't usually include the spike in Clemington Lake Park that's hard to get all, get all this specifically, specifically for Clemington Park. This current month, I did just, this exact month, we were at 712 calls, which you can see directly, six point, 65.1 calls per officer for this past thirty days. As I put on the bottom, just so there was no deception, the note, the averages, we had him with the averages, it was calculated without counting the chiefs as an officer handling the call, because typically speaking chiefs, they don't, they don't leave the office. And, uh, class twos, because I don't recount that, so have to be added in for once, just to not be out. Finally, I'd like to say that here in Clemington, we have 15, 15 officers lower our averages. Fifteen would bring us to what, how Pine Hill handles ours at 19. We would need 15 officers to be efficient and sufficient. Clemington, the officers are paid less than the previously stated towns in which we're comparison with, and officers in Clemington continually require to do more for less with us. Thank you.
Strongly pay patrolmen, I'm also president of the Clemington Police Association. Um, I'm just gonna close this out, uh, with, with what Officer Schaefer was saying. We don't argue about pay, we don't argue about our staffing levels, but when new furniture and new raises and new asphalt seem more important than saving the police department properly, we feel there's a problem there. Um, the CPA doesn't feel that $200,000 for asphalt on the fire department parking lot is appropriate when, when these positions could potentially be cut.
That's punished.
Um, and we understand it's bonded, but bonded or not, it's still money spent. And we're here, we would like, um, to get some justification on money spent on objects, excuse me, rather than, uh, public safety of Clemington. And, uh, in conclusion, we do realize that we're dreaming when we say 15 officers, but to cut the 13th position is detrimental and taking a step backwards. And, uh, we would like to ask the governing body not to abolish 13th position, but rather fill it, as we were told it would be eighteen months ago. And, uh, finally, I'd like to thank the governing body for allowing us to speak about this town's public safety and our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much, officers. I think that's very well prepared, a lot of good information in front of us. It will be reviewed and continue to be reviewed. Thanks again for your service, and goodness in front of the eyes of the government. Anything else from the public?
John Schmidt, Long West Thompson Avenue, Gloucester City, good evening.
Come up here, Dan, I can't hear you.
John Schmidt, Long West Thompson Avenue, Gloucester City, good evening. Um, he actually had a few budget questions, because I heard the same thing, which the police officer just spoke about. Um, some of you may know, and the first time I came here, Council President Andrews was wondering what I was doing here in Clemington. I explained a little bit to you how I got started, and it was actually, uh, public safety when Gloucester City cut firefighters about 14 months ago. Your current budget that's proposed, who worked on that budget?
Is that a question, John?
Yes, who worked on that budget?
We all did.
What, what members of council worked on that budget, for presenting it the first reading?
We do have a budget committee, and I know the governing body and myself sat over on those budget, budget committees, sat on their departments, and other council people, governing body of all, we're allowed to be, CFO, Bureau of Ministry, so it's a typical number of people that work on a budget. Not too many professionals.
So I'm assuming when you had put this budget together, with the exception of Council, Councilman Armbruster, who was not a member of the council, during the budget preparation process, and you saw this, not, did any of, did anything ring a bell in anyone's heads? We all know about increase in crime. Did anyone see the proposed budget that was coming forth, that was introduced from first reading, uh, to have second reading this month, was eliminating a position in the police department, eliminating the public safety position?
You're making an assumption that the governing body appears unaware of some of the issues on the budget.
I'm asking, was anyone aware of that was in the budget when you read it for first reading? It's a yes or no answer. Was anyone aware?
I wasn't aware that they were gonna eliminate an officer.
I thought they just were not going to get another one.
That is correct. It is, we're not eliminating an existing employee, a position, a position. We're not eliminating, we're not, we're not, it's an unhired position.
Well, clarify that, you're not, you're not replacing a position that was vacated by somebody leaving last year. You're just now rehiring. You're not laying anybody off, but you're not filling a position that was filled last year at this time.
You know, the, uh, police department is three-quarters of a million dollar budget for this town. It's a big burden.
I don't think you can put a price on public safety. I really don't. I've looked at the call numbers for this area of the county. Lindemall has always been high, it's now skyrocketing through the roof. Pine Hill, I believe, was equal to what Lindemall was a year ago, which is scary within itself if you look at the numbers. And Clemington is squished between the two, and with cuts all over the place. It's all shared services. It does not make sense. It does not make any sense. And for you to propose a budget with cuts to public safety, I think is very irresponsible. Now, I don't want to see anyone lose their jobs, but I go back to December, where Mayor Armbruster stated that, at the time, for the past few years, Clemington was using surplus money to avoid layoffs. Other towns, the state, the county, did layoffs. Metford is actually continuing to lay off. But push comes to shove, did you look at every single department and say, you know what, we want to try to hire that police officer? Maybe we got a full-time position here, and a full-time position there. We don't want to fire them, we don't want to put them out of work, but maybe try this, you know what, we're gonna reduce that position to part-time to be able to pay it for a police officer for public safety. Was that considered at all?
Yes. I will say in the last, but, but first of all, John, let me just call you back. You're making a lot of assumptions that things were not discussed, and I'm not necessarily making any...
I'm not making any assumptions, I'm asking if they were discussed.
I hope you understand, too, that economically, on a national level and a regional level, these are difficult times. There's also a big effort afoot on a county level to regional, it's all police services and public safety services. This is something that we don't do, we want to maintain in-home protection.
I'm very familiar with the North Frost Park.
Are you comfortable with allowing me to talk a little bit? I've been at some budget meetings, it's very distressing. Uh, it's public now, we're down to like $8,000 in surplus. What was on the head, what was on the chopping block for long-time borough residents and employees that would potentially want to lose their benefits, which is primarily the only reason why they come to work every day? This is not a, this is not an easy time. This is not necessarily a time of getting what you want, because quite honestly, everybody's losing a lot of things. Public safety, the fire department, and the police department, police departments are of extreme value to the residents of this governing body. It's just we don't have the luxury of surplus, we don't have the luxury of a lot of things that just not exist. We have a cat, we have problems that we're working through, so you paid some of the meetings, like, I'd like to see, you know, it's easy to cut when you live in Gloucester City, you know? And I don't want you to be a wise guy, but if you have a simple answer, I'd love to hear, because, you know...
Before you started speaking, I believe Councilman Wosses, your finance chairman, had tried to answer something, or did it say something?
I was not aware that we were cutting a, a police officer.
A police officer?
Right.
Your own finance chair.
That's, I, that may be my fault, but I did not, you know, we have exentual police officers, and we are simply not getting another one because we don't have the money. If we could get another one, sure. I, I think that it would be great. I think that we need, I agree, we do need another one. We probably do need three. But where are we gonna get the money from? The mayor said we have $8,000 in surplus. We don't have any money. Can we cut, can we cut personnel? I, I hear, no, we can't. I don't know what to do.
Well, I do agree with the police officer said, that we're gonna pay the parking lot here. I have the bond.
I'm not sure that one, that one does not affect the other.
That does not affect.
What's that?
That does not affect the present situation.
I believe it is true.
That's not true.
Why?
Because you just added to the debt service, that's why. And you got a $400,000 bill each year for your debt servicing. You're telling me that adding to that had no effect on it? That's ridiculous.
Well, just the interest on the bonds in this borough, I had a report from the CEO. Do you have any idea what that is?
Uh, I actually have all ideas, which are bonded warrants, over the past ten years, and I actually, during the next couple of comments, I want to address that, but if you're gonna, we'll bring it up now. Everyone's email addresses. I would like to email what was sent to me, and ask every member of council, would they not have bonded for something? And most of them is actually equipment, water tower, uh, most of it is exactly what has been previously stated, but to go back to the point, yeah. The mayor said something, I don't want anyone to lose their jobs, but I understand people need benefits. But if you're keeping an employee because you want to give them benefits as hard as this, because I, you're a long-time resident or a long-time employee, gotta balance it out. One employee, yes, has lived here, or the safety of the overall community, and that's what your task is. If you don't have public safety, you're not gonna have a community. If you can't provide for public safety, then your town's gonna go downhill. I've seen case studies, I took a lot of classes in urban, urban studies, you know, political issues. I see, we saw, saw what happened to Camden, I see it in my town, we see it in Lindemall.
Tell me where you're gonna get, where you're gonna get the money?
I think the mayor just said it.
Where?
I think there's hesitation on some members, possibly, say, you know what, we want to keep a full-time position because that person's lived here, and we want to keep them health benefits. You compromise that, you know what, we'll offer them part-time, try to save up some money and bring in an officer. By the way, it's gonna be low-paid, starting out. I think that's the dilemma you're facing.
Well, thank you, John.
Good, thank you.
It's, it's, I have been under consideration and continue to be, public safety is important in this town. It's not an easy thing, but we're constantly working on it, we're trying to do what we can and have to maintain safety, public safety. So thank you for your input, and, uh, any other questions about issues on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I just wondered, this is for...
Yeah, I, I... Well, I mean, it might as well just get all the public comment now, you don't have to address it in the...
Well, that's what I just want to ask, is this, this is usually for the agenda? Is this...
Yeah, but we're doing it all right now.
Okay, so this is then good and well there, et cetera?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to rely on my written report, typically, I'm right over at the discussion on the agenda, I know, so I have not, you know, the, thank forgiveness, and, and go. I want to do that, another question?
I, I really apologize.
Any questions arise, um, we're back.
The only, only item, and I'm gonna be very quick, because if I can answer a resolution for seeking an open space grant in Camden County for railroad park, if I can answer that, that be placed on the agenda for a resolution for improvements of railroad park, and we're gonna be submitting the application this week, they accelerate it to deadline, and we'll follow it up with...
Please do.
Does Camden County open space bodies?
This evening or for next week?
Either, either one, whatever, whatever's convenient.
If it's evening, maybe.
That's fine. You just understand that maybe on the next meeting, we can have that resolution.
Okay, do you have a correspondent to name?
Yes, of course. Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I, I apologize for interrupting, but...
No, that's okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Continue with the privilege of the floor.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of comments. Obviously, I think the police feel pretty strong about what they thought up, and the understanding then is that it's not that you're eliminating a position, but that you're not filling a position. Is that correct? Somebody?
That would be correct.
Okay. If that's the case, uh, that, was that decision then made based on your present budget?
Yes.
There's no room in the present budget for any, any of the expenditures. And I looked over the budget, I got a copy of it, and, uh, I think you're all aware that you're right now at a budget of about $5 million. Does everybody understand that? That $5 million represents, in less than eight years, a 40% increase in your budget. 10% of that comes out in debt service. You have bonded this borough so much into debt, that as far as paying that debt looks, you don't have the money to do so. Which is quite the reason that movies put out their statement on your spending. One of the challenges that they talk about in the budget is a small, mature tax base. That's been known for, for forty years around here, as far as I can remember. When I first won and canceled, back in the late sixties, we had a small, mature tax base. Tax base times rate equals income. That's what you worked with, what you had. It also says on their report, the low average wealth levels. That means that forty, the mean salary of $42,000 of the borough of Clemington doesn't cover the wealth that you need for your budget. That's exactly why they downgraded your rating. They also say in here, continued structural imbalance. Now, if you were a business and you had a report like that, your next step would be chapter 11. And I don't see how you can sit there without understanding what you have done to this borough. When the police say they want one more patrolman, one, you can't find the money for that, but for your profligate borrowing, you're paying over $450,000 a year. Now, that seems to me, that is structural imbalance. So I'm, I'm just wondering if there's any plan among the four people who have, in a sense, put this budget where it is, if you have any plan whatsoever of trying to get us out of this dilemma? The second point I wanted to ask, and I wish at some point you'd address that, the second point I wanted to ask is, there's a, a consultant that you have that's working with the county improvement authority, is that what it is? You've had the secret meetings, and I don't, hasn't been a lot of information about it.
Excuse me, they're not secret, they're closed?
Oh, I should say they aren't. They're closed, that's secret.
No, they're not secret, and you know they're not secret, and you had the same meeting.
Oh, that's not true, George, I know they're secret, but you're keeping it secret.
You had the same meeting, you were the mayor.
You're keeping it secret, you're calling a private meeting, what's that? Don't tell me it's not secret, I know the definition, secret. All right, the, the point is, how long have the meetings been going on?
What meetings? The secret meetings?
The secret meetings on the deal between the borough and the county, or the improvement authority, whatever it is. What I want to do is get some information about it, that's all. I'm then asking what you discussed.
You've had executive session meetings regarding the, uh, eleven property, as far back as I can remember, probably two thousand and...
No, that's not what I asked for.
That's what you're speaking of, the executive session meetings are?
No, I'm talking about the executive session meetings specifically for the current discussions that's going on with the county improvement authority.
Improvement authority's been involved since about nineteen, nine, or 2001.
Mark, going back at that time, we had changed the zoning, uh, reference over there to light industry. We're not light industry anymore.
The, the zoning was changed on that property to a redevelopment zone in approximately a week, 2003.
2004 or '05?
I think it was about closer, closer to 2003, one, one...
Mark, when I was here, it was, it was zone light industry, because you and I made a call to a company over in Gibbsburg that was light industry. That's what we were trying to get in there.
Harbor Freight was one of the ones we spoke to. We spoke to many companies at the time about trying to get the Harbor Freight list to company in Gibbsburg.
At that time, Mark, I was ready to leave office, it was zone industry, light industry.
It, it, that would be one of the zones for, yes, it was included that, but about that, at the same time, that the planning and zoning board was having the meetings that made it into a redevelopment zone.
Then tell me, when? When did, when did that happen?
Approximately 2003.
No, it wasn't 2003, because I was still in office.
Yeah, because you were in office when this took place, Fred. You were in office, that's when they, that's when the improvement authority took possession of the property.
I'd like to see that, because I don't remember that at all. Anyhow, when did the meeting start in the discussion for which you hired the consultant? Let me put it that way, when did that start?
The current consultant that is working now, his name is Phil Rowan, uh, he, I believe he was the name of the company, now is economic development consultant, is that right?
Uh, yes.
Um, Phil started, uh, working for the borough, I believe in an unpaid position about three, four years ago, and I believe he started collecting pay two years ago, possibly. Tom, is that correct?
All right, then we have a reference point, three or four years ago, approximately a, a reference point. At that time, is that when you started the executive sessions, the discussions of what the borough's position was gonna be versus the position of the county?
The discussions went on prior to the hiring of Phil Rowan, they, they went on previous to that, uh, discussions, uh, when we had, uh, a previous developer, I believe it was Schaefer, and before that it was, uh, Caterman, and we had previous meetings in executive discussing, uh, negotiations with both those companies previous to that event.
Then, then these discussions have been going on for approximately seven years, five to seven years.
At least.
Five to seven years. And those discussions have always been about the relationship between the borough and the county, or the county improvement authority, whatever you want to call it, concerning the contract that would be negotiated between the borough and, and the county, is that correct?
They would be negotiated relating back to when George... They would be negotiated, they, they concerned...
on now, they would be negotiate, they concerned either discussion regarding the negotiation between the county and the developer, or between the county and the municipality. There is no, up till now, there has been no...